All right, it is Monday. We don't hardly ever meet on Mondays. It is Monday, December 13th, at 3:01, and I, we're missing one council member. They're in the building, but we want to get started. We may wait just a second and let him get here. We do definitely have a quorum. We will be having a workshop today. I am calling us to order since we have a quorum, and we'll move on to item number two, citizens' comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, so we're already done with that one. And moving on to item number 3A, this is a work session that we have scheduled today, and our only item for discussion is a workshop discussion on an economic development policy direction. And I will turn it over to the city manager to introduce our topic today.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Thank you for scheduling this time, especially during the workday for some of you. I won't spend a lot of time with why we're here. I think, I think you all know why we're here. We've had discussion with Mr. Esch prior about what our work plan would be. We're still following that work plan. We're not exactly on the same schedule we were originally, but we're awfully close. And the next, and this is a workshop, and we're not asking Council to take any formal action this afternoon. What we will be asking you to do is listen to Mr. Esch's observations from the research and the interviews he has conducted so far, as he outlines what his observations are, and as he creates a framework for future policy discussion. As a quick reminder, Council, that is what this objective has always been. This exercise we've been going through the last few months is all pointing to Council establishing clearly articulated policy direction for economic development implementation here in Bastrop. And our schedule is that after this afternoon's discussion, we will come back to you on January the 25th, 2022, and ask you to take action on that precisely worded policy direction. The bulk of this workshop will be Mr. Esch's presentation, and your questions, comments, and feedback as he goes, and then afterwards. But I did want to take a moment, Council, to set the stage, if you will, and provide for Council some things for you to be thinking about while Joe goes through his presentation, and as you ponder that future policy direction. I'm going to suggest to you that there are three keys to success here, and one of those keys is clear understanding of role. Again, I'm not going to repeat what you'll hear from Mr. Esch, and frankly, Council, most of you have heard this fairly recently, back in July, when we had a joint workshop with the BEDC Board. BEDC Attorney, Mr. Zek, talked about roles, and I thought did a good job of that. And several of you attended a TNL-sponsored training exercise just a few days ago, where I think you heard a similar message. But I also wanted you to hear from the city manager's perspective, kind of a summary of what this role responsibility is as it pertains to economic development policy. You're the city council. I know I'm stating the obvious. You're the only elected officials in the mix, and as such, you have this ultimate responsibility for the allocation of resources. And you're going to hear Mr. Esch talk about things like how we measure things, how do we determine the value of things, how do we determine the cost of things. That ultimate cost relative to benefit balancing act is, is on the shoulders of the city council and the city council only. There's a role there for the BEDC and the city staff and the EDC staff, but ultimately, that burden, if you will, rests on the shoulders of the city council. And then there is a role of the BEDC that throughout all of this, we absolutely do understand, we completely respect, there is an important oversight, a strategic oversight, implementation kind of responsibility that the BEDC has. Again, we take that seriously. The BEDC very clearly and appropriately does have an ombudsman kind of role that can help and guide people who are affected by our development practices and policies. I will suggest that it is never appropriate for them to take on an advocacy role in that regard, but certainly a help and a guide to folks who are going through the processes is certainly appropriate. And then there's a staff role. Staff role is not to set policy, as you know, but we do have an important role in recommending policy. And here, I'm talking about both staff of the city and of the EDC. Your staff should be process-oriented. Your staff ought to be counted on for expertise on particular development issues, and you ought to be able to count on the staff for, for having some awareness of what best management practices are. Colin, go ahead to the next slide. Another key element of success here is being consistent with the policy work the city council has all, has already done. Council, here's where I encourage you to remember and stay true to the very important work that this city council and others have done over the last few years. Your, your, your approach to managing growth is being emulated by, by others. Your, your approach to how we provide for and ultimately pay for public infrastructure with the priority of ensuring that the ratepayers and the taxpayers who are currently here aren't overly burdened for the cost of infrastructure development and expansion along the city's perimeter is vitally important. Your emphasis on connectivity and especially multimodal connectivity both honors our heritage in our past, but it puts us in a good position for the future. I think we all know the extent to which we've got significant traffic issues facing us right now, and as we manage development for the future, we need to pay attention to that. I'm asking you to stay cognizant of all of that. Fiscal and environmental sustainability, our development processes pay a lot of attention to that, and I would suggest we continue to do that. And of course, please don't apologize for your priority on maintaining authentic Bastrop. That, that, that speaks to that connectivity thing again. It also speaks to honoring what is about our downtown that is, that is unique and special. And my last slide is a transition into what you're going to be hearing more specifically from, from Mr. Esch. I'll just refer to him as Joe from this point forward. Joe will walk you through five different areas of alignment. And as he talks about his observations, and then when he talks about a future framework structure for policy direction, he's going to speak in terms of vision, that's your vision, the people who are involved, because this policy development can only be successfully implemented if all of the people involved, board directors, staff, and city council are all on the same bus. He's going to talk about performance measures. It is critically important that we get direction from the city council on what success looks like, and Joe will talk us through that. Execution and accountability, and how we hold each other, how we hold the staff accountable for that primarily. And then he's also going to comment on existing processes and systems, and in some cases, where we need processes and systems. So with that-
Thank you, City Manager. Council, I want to remind you of one thing. When we have our normal council meetings, we, we wait for you to be given the floor. We call on you, you know, I call on you and recognize you, and, and we only have one person talking at a time. Why, it's always good to only have one person talking at a time, because that's helpful for all of us. I will suggest to you that during the workshop, don't, don't wait for me to call on you. If you have a question for Mr. Esch, just key your mic and ask the question. We'll be respectful of each other, but I know sometimes it kind of slows things down if, if two of you have your light on at the same time. So just recognize that it's a little, a little more informal, and we're trying to get some information flowing, so you don't have to wait for me to recognize you. Thank you very much. Mr. Esch?
Madam Mayor, members of Council, thank you for your time today. As I was listening to Paul, I walked down memory lane, digressed for a moment, in that my father was a Personnel Director and Deputy Superintendent of Schools for better part of the 40 years he was with top public schools. And he was my mentor, my friend, my guide. I learned many things from him. And one of the things I learned early on in my career was he told me that people lose their jobs, organizations lose their way, more often not, not because they're not capable or competent, or can't, they can't do the job, but because of communications, because of lack of alignment, because of understanding, the things that when, when people are not communicating, when there isn't an understanding of expectations, or why people are there, that's where there are problems. And so when you look at alignment, it is something that I have believed all my professional career, and it's, it's something we're going to be discussing today. And as Paul and the mayor indicated, I hope that this is a conversation. I get wound up, so I'm going to try to slow down. If you, if you see me going too fast, and I'm talking to you, I will slow down, I promise. But if you have a question also, let's have a conversation. Let's make sure we engage in this process. So for moving this forward, it's already indicated, the purpose of this conversation today is to provide that alignment, to make sure that there's clear and concise direction to the board from the council on your expectations. Ultimately, the idea is, is that the city sets what your strategic vision is. The BEDC helps you accomplish that. To be able to accomplish that, they need to understand what your expectations are. Right now, there have been issues with, and I think there's a lack of alignment and a lack of clarity, and so we're here again. It's because people may be, two people separated by a common language. This is an opportunity to create communications across the, the council and the board. I will not read all the slides. However, I will go through this one in more detail. And there's a number of definitions of economic development you might look to, but one that has been very well stated and clearly and concisely said. Basically, if you break this up, economic development exists for three things. It's the application of public resources. It is the private development that comes to that, is enticed to there, and the public benefit is the created. There is an equation in this process that says if we are providing a public benefit to a private development, the benefit that we should receive in return, be it direct, indirect, tangible or intangible, should exceed the value of our investment or whilst do it. So as you look at these components, this is the base premise by which we're moving forward, because economic development touches all aspects, all asset classes, be it residential, commercial, industrial, office. It blurs the line oftentimes between the public and private sector. You'll see public-private partnerships as a part of economic development. You'll, you heard me say this in my first meeting. It's again, true. Economic development does not make a bad project a good project. It makes a good project possible here versus there, today versus tomorrow, and to a higher standard. And in some cases, it differs. What is good for one community is not good for another, and the change is over time. When I got involved in economic development, it was only about contributory employers, public sector jobs, but has changed over time. If you look at Frisco up in the Dallas area, they provide incentives to a Walmart. Why would they do that? Because they wanted the cash register of Walmart in their community versus in Plano next door, and they were looking to bring revenue to their community. So it differs from place to place and community to community. And it does not mean that they're right or somebody else is wrong. It is what is right for their community. But it should have definable goals, because if you don't know where you're going, how do you know when you've arrived? And as you look at all these things, the definable benefit is one of those elements to that process. But economic development corporations, and as has been alluded to, you folks have had spent a number of meetings, opportunities to, to hear what economic development corporations do and what they don't do. But there are some assertions out there, even by members of your board and staff, that suggests that there's only a limited framework within what is approved by the statute as to what you should pursue. And to me, that makes no sense. The statute allows you the tools, and if you go back to my earlier example of economic development will vary from community to, to community, then therefore, the tools exist, and the breadth of those tools exist to accomplish the objectives that you, as the council, have set forward. Further, sometimes you'll hear that the EDCs, and this is not the Bastrop EDC in specific, it is the EDC, an Economic Development Corporation, a 4B corporation, a type A corporation, a type B corporation, should not be considered a tool of the city. I'm going to suggest to you that by their very definition, they are tools of the city. The city is the one that creates the ballot proposition and takes it to the public. The city is the one that's responsible for the oversight. The city council is the one that approves their budget, makes sure that it's consistent. So therefore, by definition, the corporations are tools of the city. The issue is whether or not you have a plan in place, a strategic vision that is measurable, that's actionable, that's definable, that has public input, that has a public benefit in mind, that is not changed on a willy-nilly basis, but is something that you can show has a benefit to the public. And therefore, the EDCs are things that help accomplish a portion of, not necessarily all, of your economic development efforts of a community. So as it's been said several times, ultimately, the EDCs are responsible to the city council. But they are not, and it's been said some places, even here, that they are a check and balance, that they are the conscience of the city. They are not. The council is elected by the public. The conscience of the city, this checks and balances is the elected, is, is the public, the electorate. The EDC board are, exists to help you accomplish your objectives. So when we get into vision, so as you recall from the interviews, I went through, and Paul articulated, there are five areas I looked at. And so what I tried to do is summarize some of the takeaways from those conversations. Ultimately, there will be a more detailed, to digress for a moment, I, I started out and I had, I put all kinds of stuff in it, and I ended up with 65 slides in my presentation. I, Paul, he went, "Stop." So pare it down, and I, and I pared it down, had to pare it down some more. So after a few good beatings, I have pared it down to a few items to discuss with you today, some of the salient points. There are others that we can delve into, and that's where I hope if you have questions, let's go down that road. But some of the observations that I would share with you is the vision, as we, we talked about, should be to dream big, long term. It's something that should be based in reality. If you think that you're going to be, a Boeing plant is going to locate here, it's not going to happen. If however, you're looking at Tesla or semiconductors, those are the things that are coming in this area and may be an opportunity. But you need to make sure that there's a long-term set of goals. And when you look at the interviews that I had with the council and with the board, there's a general alignment that, that everyone sees that there's an intent to grow the community and for the benefit of the community. There's a lack of specific goals. There is a general, I guess, the most specific goal is everyone agrees that one of the objectives that is in front of us for Bastrop is the completion of the Bastrop Industrial Park, that that is going to bring growth, that's going to bring jobs, that's going to bring capital investment. And everyone sees that as a positive. As you move forward with these items, there is a desire to see, there's a recognition that there's a lack of specific measures, and there's a desire to see how do we define what economic development is. What's that dollars per job could be? What's the capital investment requirement? It could be intangible for some quality of life aspects. There are certain things that you look. In fact, when we did Sugarland Town Square, the intangible was the icon of Stephen F. Austin on a, on a horse. It became the image of the city. Prior to the city doing Town Square, people thought of what they called the Pink Lady, which is the char house of Imperial Sugar, and that was people's view of, of Sugarland. But now, wherever you go, you start to see the image of the community being some, an icon that was an art piece, that was a quality of life investment, that was invested as part of the economic development efforts. And that was important, and it becomes more important to communities, because companies are not just looking for a place to locate their business. They want their employees to have a place to, to, to live and to play and to enjoy themselves. And so there's a lot of ways that you can define return on investment, and a lot of different aspects that you will measure as a part of your objectives for that purpose. There's a desire amongst all to see the growth along the 71 corridor continue. What's interesting, and I like to highlight this, the EDC has a strategic plan. No one mentioned that, that using the EDC strategic plan is a roadmap for success, that we're going to benchmark our success against the plan that we've already adopted. And I would argue to you that, that, that the purpose of a plan is to set that strategic vision that council then approves, and then creates a business plan and a plan of work and a budget that then acts upon over a period of time. And that's part of your goals and objectives. Otherwise, why have a strategic plan? From a people standpoint, when you look at people, you're looking to ensure that the people have the same, same set of, they're there for the right reasons, that they have the capacity to be able to undertake the tasks which you've given them. And right now, there's a clear understanding across the interviews of what council sees as its role, and believes in providing clear direction, desire, and outcomes. The EDC wants the best for the economic development efforts. There's less clarity on the role of the EDC in that process, but yet there's, there's a general, a general goal. I believe fully that both the EDC and the council and the city are seeking the best outcome for the city of Bastrop and the community. I believe they have different views from the interviews I've had as to what that is and what their roles are. Part of it's due to the history of the EDC. Part of it is that they see themselves as making sure that there's a consistency across, and they need to make sure that there's an application of, of good, sound judgment processes. But that, if you have a board, it's been my experience, if you do not provide a board, regardless of whether it's a parks board, airport board, economic development board, with clear direction, they will define their own. And if they've been there long enough, they'll still define their own because they've been there for a long time. That's what happens. And so this, what you're experiencing, as my father would say, is, is you're disgustingly normal. Alignment or a lack of alignment occurs over time because boards find their own way with the best of intent. And so that's why conversations like these, disagreement should never be considered a bad thing. Disagreement with personal overtones is a bad thing. Disagreement or lack of an understanding of the roles and responsibility. Ultimately, the responsibilities for making a decision lies with the group. Consensus building is great. Collaboration is wonderful, but at some point, a decision has to be made. And there's a difference in view upon the parties as to who makes that final decision. I would suggest to you that it's relatively clear. It's the city council, because again, you folks are in charge. And so setting this, realigning this process is not a bad thing, and it does not have to be considered a bad thing. It's ensuring that there's good communication, back to my original point. But there's also a wide variety of roles, responsibilities and roles amongst the members as to what they see their roles are. Some of the members see the city as the problem. They just do. I don't know that when you look into that, that that's the case, but does occur, yes, sir?
Real quick, you may delve into it later, but they see the city as the problem from, from a policymaking standpoint, operational administration, or a mixture of all?
Yes. And more specific in answer to your question, policy standpoint, you have people who've taken, you have, you have quality people who've taken strong ownership of their role, and because of that, see that their responsibility is to bring to you and undertake this project. And so therefore, they are on your, they see them, and some of them see themselves as on the same level of the city council. So the city is the problem because you won't allow them to go make the determinations. In some cases, if you're looking at projects, there's information that's not shared, and I will get to this later, so I don't mind duplicating the, let's hit this while it's hot, and we can come back to it later. You'll see where information is not shared. A prospect comes in, and there's concern about, "I've got this prospect over here. We've got a non-disclosure agreement, and we can't share this with you." It's double secret probation, if you're a member of your animal house, okay? So we're not going to share it with you because we don't want to make, we want to make sure the project does not go away. The problem with that is, is any good site selector, any good business knows that to build this business here, or build a prospect or whatever, I have to meet a timeline. So there are things that are required, information that's, that's necessary for me to be able to make that location decision, and that information needs to be shared so that the people on the other side, in fact, Rebecca highlighted in the IEDC, International Economic Development Organization, they have a code of ethics which requires as a part of that sharing of information across that process. And yet, on the staff operational side, you see a conflict of the city. They don't need to share this because the city's just going to muck it up. Did that answer your question? Sorry, I will go on for hours if you, part of the 60, 70 slides type thing, I'm sorry. So, all right. So, next slide. Performance measures. How do we measure success? There's a lack of specifics, short-term and long-term goals in this process. Goals can be, if you look at, a friend of mine was the county manager for Prince William County in, in Virginia, and their county set specific goals to tell exactly how many square feet of new office space was going to get built, about how many square feet of office space in existing was going to get redeveloped, how many jobs. It can be as specific as that, or it can be more general. It also depends on the timeframe. You typically set longer-term goals or, or more vague. You see what the city's going to be, and then as they implement, you refine those over time. But presently, there's a lack of specific objectives that exist. There's a lack of means. When, when I looked at some of the performance measures, the performance agreements, and you look at how do we do this incentive or is that incentive? Who gets what? There's not a standard means by which you determine how much to provide a specific project. Does that mean a bad thing? No, it means an evolutionary process. It is not uncommon for economic development corporations to go through, as they continue to evolve and have more projects, to start setting measures. But I'm going to suggest to you that, that if you have limited resources and specific goals and priorities, that you need to determine where to invest those dollars. And a threshold, part of that's also important for the public. So when you do an annual report, and you say, "Public, here's where we invested capital. We gave company XYZ money. We gave them a tax abatement, or we did this for them." Well, why did you do that? Well, here's the return that we got. Here are the benefits that we, as a community, received that exceeded the cost of development. And that could be a quality of life initiative. It could be where we put infrastructure because we see these things. Take a look at, for example, at your business park. It was accounted to me that you have about $14 million capital investment in one of the businesses. By your tax rate, that's about $70,000 a year of taxes, and yet you spent millions of dollars in infrastructure. If you use the rule of thumb, it says 10 times the amount of revenues, how much bond indebtedness I could issue. Right now, you're underwater between how much you've invested in the business park for infrastructure versus how much you're getting in return for, from a capital investment. Does that mean it's not a success? No. But business parks develop on a pro forma and over time, and so you're trying to determine what my absorption rate should be over time, what types of businesses I'm going to go for, and how this all works together. So performance measures that can be defended, whether qualitative or quantitative, whether they're, or they're direct or indirect, we're looking at how we can communicate that to our, our citizenry. So sometimes, as I indicate, performance is, is inferred. These things, activity is progress, and it's not necessarily progress. So execution and accountability. Some of the things that which you have right now is you're focused on personalities. You're focused on control, and that gets from a desire to ensure that good work is being done. I don't subscribe anything nefarious to it. I'm not suggesting to you the people that have those views are, are meaning anything but the best, but the problem is you have a conflict because it's focused on the wrong items. There's a lack of flexibility and teamwork in that process. People, if you got their kindergarten report card does not play well with others might show up, okay? Because of that, there's appearance of a silo mentality to how you, this is our, our bailiwick. Take, for example, infrastructure. Right now, there's a discussion going on as to who manages infrastructure. Well, typically, infrastructure is going to be absorbed by the city. It's going to be a city asset long term, and the city's the one that manages projects. But the EDC wants to control who manages the project they fund. That doesn't necessarily make sense. In fact, most EDCs that, as you grow, that doesn't make sense. Why? Because you have a sophisticated city staff and processes are in place already to do that. And that's also the process of teamwork. That's that alignment. And it does not take away the importance of that EDC as to the success of your activity, because together, you're bringing what you do best to get projects done and for the best interest of the public. But there's a highlighted desire. There's a recognition, even with the things that I've mentioned, and I do not want it to come across, that we're either talking about a significant amount of reporting that we're trying to ask them to do, or that we're suggesting that people don't want, that all we see is problems, because all parties would like to have a dialogue on a regular basis to move things forward. But I'm just going to suggest to you that you can't have a dialogue with everybody still thinking they're here. You have to reset that dialogue so that there's expectations, roles. There's a, a retired Navy CEO called Jaco Willnick, and when he talks about, from a leadership perspective, is he said, "You know, my team comes together, and I have a 90% solution to a problem. And my team comes together, and they have a 70% solution to a problem. But I picked the 70% solution rather than my 90% solution." Why? Because I know if I pick the 70% solution, they're going to be committed to it. It's going to get done. They're going to spend more attention to it, and it's probably going to be a better outcome than my 90% solution. But the difference in that dialogue, and the difference in his approach, is there's a command structure right there. There's an agreement of who's, who's making the decision, and so that still comes through, but yet there, he's recognizing that, that there's an importance to the independence and the value you get from a motivation from working with them to make decisions. So I'm going to suggest to you that, that there's a desire from all parties to make that happen, but we got to reset the clock as to who's, who's, who's on charge. As a part of this, and, and activity does not mean progress, and missing a performance measure is not a bad thing, because in the, as you look at execution accountability, if you've missed a performance measure, and you look at who's accountable, you can find out how you can change the process, you can change the process, change things to make it successful. I may not be hitting, but I'm missing closer. If I'm on the target range and I find out where I shot and I missed, I can correct to make sure I hit it the next time. That's a part of this process. Because accountability and execution is the roles. Who does what? Who's tied to the business plan? Processes and systems. These are the core things, the core activities that you undertake, that define how the business is to be conducted, all right? These are the elements that help you identify problems and a problem-solving that brings things forward as you identify issues that you need to tackle. They're the essential procedures that you would take place every day to get the golf ball from here to in the hole. There's a pattern of limited coordination which affects that process and systems right now. There's a lack of systems in place that's consistency, be it reporting, be it interaction with the city, budgeting, all those different things. Part of it's because it's on an ad hoc basis. Part of it's because you're moving from a more entrepreneurial setting to a well-organized process. Incentives are on a case-by-case basis. Now, that's not a bad thing. And the reason is, and just like not, like missing your target necessarily isn't a bad thing because allows you to adjust, if you think about investors on the private side, they look on investments on a case-by-case basis, but they have a process or a system or a set of measures they go through to determine whether or not it's an investment they want to make, but they view each decision individually. So when you look at a summary of the key observations from the interviews that I've had, I continue to restate this because I think it's important. Everybody wants the best. There's a disconnect in the alignment of all five areas, from vision to people to processes to systems to execution, all things, there's, so clear policy direction is needed to establish the roles and expectations of the city council to the board. And through this process, some people may choose to self-select out of it, some people hopefully will not. But at least you've communicated what you need to do, what people need to do to help the city, because ultimately, it's part of your economic development activities. The intent is there's a common understanding, a recognition of the city's goals and objectives, and what is required of the EDC to help reach those. There's another thing that I would highlight again here, that there's a clear message that I believe you need to send to the EDC, and that is, and only, let me backtrack that for a second. This is not me to tell you what to do. But if you agree with his standpoint, I think it's something that you need to suggest, and that is, you want to ensure that you preserve the full range of legislatively allowed uses to accomplish your objectives because they will change over time. As you're more successful, your goals will change. As you accomplish something over here, something else might pop up, or situations may change. Let me give you an example. In the case of Sugar Land Town Square, when we built that in 2007, the goal was, or 2000, early 2000s, the goal was we were going to be the Woodlands, just like the Woodlands. Where we made a mistake is we didn't realize that we were so close to the Galleria that 60% of the shopping leaked out of our community to go to the Galleria, that didn't from the Woodlands because they were a different market, they were further away. So our goal of being the retail shopping, we started saying, wait a second, when we're working with General Growth Partners at the mall, they said, "Our stores don't stock the same thing." Why? Because they don't want to risk it here, they know that they can sell X, they'll get the people to drive down there. So we had to retool. So we retooled and focused, retooled what we were doing and how we focused our incentives to provide businesses based on the change in circumstances. The same thing happened again in 2007 when you had the crash, and all of a sudden, there were a whole bunch of retailers that didn't exist anymore. And so now, when I got to Sugar Land, there was a planner that said Sugar Land had an ordinance against fun. Why? Because they only had two places that you could have a cocktail. And then with Town Square, there were more places, and it became a nightclubbing area and a place for entertainment. The goal of the city, and this ties back to my earlier point, the goal of the city was to have a place that people could engage in commerce from a retail standpoint, could have a quality of life initiative that was a seat for the city hall, that was also a place where people have their offices. There was a place where we brought in our hotels and conventions, it was a gathering, it was the focal point for the city. And we measured that based off of a couple different factors. And because those measures never changed, the specific uses that came into that development over time did change, and we were allowed to be flexible enough, and we still, I would argue, is still a success today. I hope I'm not talking too fast because I get going. So there's needs. When you look at a needs, here's a summary of some needs identified. That accountability of a plan of work is process. And when you work out, if you're a person enjoys exercise, you have a workout buddy. And accountability goes both sides. Accountability says, "Hey, here's what we'd like to accomplish, and here's what we need to do." They will push, it is not a problem for the B EDC board, or any EDC board, to push a council that says, "Here's what I need from you." But the council sees things from a different perspective. You're looking at not just this element of economic development, but the city's needs in totality, and so your perspective may be broader than what they bring to you. So you may push back, you may agree, you may, you may submit 70%, 90% solution type of thing. So as you move forward with this, ultimately, you're coming together with a process that gives you an accountable business plan, that has specific goals, that has specific process measures. So when they're bringing incentive, and they said, "This company wants to come here, and we'd like to do a Chapter 380 agreement with you, city, we'd like you to create a tax abatement, we'd like you to do investment over here," and you say, "Okay, what's a return on investment? What's it mean to us?" Well, we can't tell you. Well, I can't invest in it. We need to work on the same page, and by the way, we can't count it twice. So that return on investment is the totality of investment of what they're putting in and what you're putting in, and what's the net benefit to everybody. Some places, I'll digress from that for a second, will say that some places look at as sales tax corporations, a little bit different because they consider recurring revenue source. The problem with that is, in a downturn of economy, is that returning revenue source will go away. And so I always argue that you need to consider it as part of that overall total package for considering ROI because it's fickle nature in a potential downturn or change in the economy. But ultimately, determining the net benefit, and some of those can be the quality of image issues, it could be an icon to your community, it could change the image, when now, what did I hear when somebody interviews? "I heard Elon." Well, like it or not, he's not just an investment, he's an icon. So if you have that name thrown out, or whatever name it is, there is a benefit to having intangible things in your community, whatever it might be. But it's a clear statement also that the city manages capital projects. One of the things that I observed was that the EDC was funding a infrastructure study, utility study, which is typically projects that are undertaken by the government. Why? Because they're public utilities, but they were initiating it, but there wasn't a lot of coordination going on. So things need to also be driven by the city, the city's needs, and the projects also need to be managed by the city, and something for, I would offer for you to consider. Reporting standards and coordination of meetings, process, timing is key. So, those are some of the observations. What does that mean as we go forward? What I did was, I took those points, I took the discussion, and said, "How do we start to build a draft policy for your consideration?" And to have consistency, I took the same five areas and say, "Let's put statements in here from what I've either read in your documents, heard from people, as something for to start with." And this is, this is the participative part of the process as well, where if you don't like it, that's okay. This isn't the world according to Joe, this is the world according to you all. And so what do you see? How would you change it? What would you modify? What would you add? We have time in this discussion to do it. So from a vision standpoint, what I, what this first bullet point basically says is, you exist, you've got physical assets, you've got human capital, you are a place where you're going to leverage the assets that you have to help you harness growth, to attract things, that helps you accomplish the goals that have been articulated in your plans. That's what that bullet point, first bullet point says. The second one comes back and says, and I picked 2030, basically says, "We're going to have a fully occupied business park." Why? Because when you look at capital investment on most business parks, they're typically looking at a five-to-seven-year window for investment. This is larger than that, gives a little bit of leeway, but says, "We'd like to see within a timeframe, a reasonable timeframe, that a private sector business, as a means of benchmarking, would look at for accomplishing certain things." But not just a business park, there's also a vibrant downtown, that's one of your goals from your Main Street program. There's a conversation about having a thriving commercial corridor about on 71. But there's also, how do you have a place for people to live? So you need to have quality housing and development that's connected. Your whole B3 code is about connectivity, so I can't not have something in here about connectivity. That's what the second bullet point means. I will stop there and ask if you have any feedback. Do you like it? Do you dislike it? Would you change it? What are your thoughts?
Well, I think you hit on a lot of the points that we talk about all the time in all of our missions, and, I mean, I like having the, on your second point about giving a goal to get the business park filled, it's been there forever, so I think you really hit it on. I think you really did some good interviews and got, at least in my vision, pretty close to what we needed, my vision.
I would have to say the same, because during our interview, I mentioned that I was planning to attend more EDC meetings, but I think now, that's a bad idea, but if we do the quarterly meetings where the council and EDC all meet together, that would be a better, better thing to do. Thanks.
You know, I mean, I like the more pointed direction that the second bullet point is. I'm trying to figure out how they are, they're not mutually exclusive of each other, neither one of the bullet points, but the second bullet point is certainly more pointed. Now, I was, I still haven't made up my mind if I'm fully receptive to that second bullet point from the one that we've had up until now, but I do like it's more pointed in nature.
But I, the one that we've had until now, I don't think we've made a vision statement for EDC now, because I don't, just for checking for understanding, I don't think we're talking about changing the city's vision, I think we're talking about establishing
This is the policy.
...the city's vision for an economic development corporation.
This is the policy that would be directed to the EDC for your expectations for them. This is the plan of work, you're tasking them with certain things and defining what you see their role as being. That's the purpose of this, not to change, it should also be consistent if it does not build upon, but should be consistent with your adopted plans.
Does that help at all?
Absolutely does, absolutely does. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, I think that, I'm glad we're doing this whole process, and it just, it sounds to me like from your summary of everything that you got from the interviews that were, the communication is, we've probably got a D minus on that as far as communicating with the city to the Economic Development Corporation, and I think everybody recognized that in the last meeting we had with B EDC, and we, everybody wanted to fix that, but we need to step, put our foot on the gas in order to do that, and we don't need to wait. I think that that needs to happen, happen right away, because all the growth that's going to come here isn't going to wait for us to get ready for it, we need to be prepared for it, we need to get clear and direct communication to the B EDC on what the city wants to do in general, and all of us as council members, and mayor and city manager, need to know exactly what that, what that is. And I couldn't tell you a lot of things that B EDC's doing or chasing, or you also brought up the agreements, non-disclosure agreements. Is that a fact, that B EDC has non-disclosure agreements that city council wouldn't have access to or wouldn't know about? And why wouldn't we? I mean, why wouldn't we be included in the non-disclosure agreement? If that's the entity of the city, I mean, I get it, I know exactly why there's non-disclosure agreements done, but how could we really direct or vote on something later on when it's presented if we weren't aware of everything that's going on that's included maybe in a non-disclosure agreement? I mean, to me, the intent of that is to keep word from leaking out that something's going to come here, and then maybe real estate or something is going to be inflated because some new business is coming in next door. But we, as council people, should be working, in my opinion, we should be working along with the EDC with that, and we should be included in a non-disclosure agreement like that, because ultimately, we're going to be asked to give somebody an incentive or give somebody some kind of recognition for the work they're doing to come here and bring housing and jobs and other revenue here, and I, I don't know why we should be kept in the dark on that and be the last people to know about it.
I think it's a timing thing more than anything else, and certainly welcome Joe's input on how he's seen it work in other cities, but sometimes they come in with feelers, and they'll have, they'll sign a non-disclosure with the economic development staff and find things out. But to your point, by the time council's voting on it, there's, there is a basis of information that needs to be there in order for us to vote. But do you have comments on non-disclosure agreements?
Yes, ma'am. A couple things. First off, oftentimes, it gets to what you call your CRM, your contact management resource system, or contact resource management, which gets into what you define as a prospect, a project, different levels. And as you create processes, you define at what level something tips the scale to when you bring certain people in, what elements. So the other, the other element is, and I will ask the attorney, because I didn't stay at Holiday Inn Express last night, if I go astray, the reality is, while things are in negotiations, they can be kept confidential. It's only once you take a vote on items or there's finality. So the city can keep confidential information, there's no reason why you couldn't. The timing is a fabulous point, Mayor, because it gets to, at what time do you need to know what? You have an agenda process, and as you go through your agenda, you sit to see look aheads to what you're going to get. Similarly, that goes in economic development. Here's, here's our prospect report. Here are different things, and some of them can be code-worded. There's different ways to deal with the information so that you're not risking the project. And there's different levels and timing of information that's provided, but it needs to flow in a thoughtful manner, and different parts of the city need to have it. Different parts need to be brought in for utilities, capacity planning, for if they have to go through zoning, from all the different things. If you have to change something, you don't want to know at the ninth hour that, oh my gosh, we got to make them jump through hoops to get something that's a regulatory approval that may or may not be in your interest. Because you may say, "This isn't a project we're not interested in," but now at the last minute, you're seeing it? So that's why that timing and coordination is critical for any number of reasons. Did I help answer your question?
Yeah. I get that, but I think we need to be more. I think that we need to be more involved on the upfront piece of it, or at least have some knowledge, and then that could be done in reporting from B EDC to council as to exactly what you said, what are you chasing? Here's some prospects, here's some other things that we've got, and that could be listed as whatever code name we give them, or something similar to that, but at least we understand what we're going after, and I think we're also chasing things that not everybody's clear about if it's right for the city or not. And then I think that's our fault, council's fault for not having a clear direction, and our fault for not communicating with B EDC more than we have been, which is why we're doing this anyway. So I'm glad that we're doing something.
A couple, a couple feedback, points of feedback. One, that's why you have a city manager, is that oftentimes, the boards will provide, that's part of that weekly integration and monthly feedback that they get to the city manager, because that city managers report to the council, which can also give them updates on key points, because oftentimes, at different, you're looking to ensure that there's, here's the high-level data, and as it moves to a next point, there may be additional, and there are checks along the way. Additionally, through that process, there's a strategic plan and plan of work that qualifies the type of projects they're going to go after, and if it does, if it falls outside that, there's additional communication that should be required early on. Why? Because it's not something that we've said we want to go after. But it still may be something we want to go after, and we're not suggesting that you say, "No, no, no, we can't talk about that." It's that, hey, listen, I need to check to make sure that meets with the strategy, the policy direction of the council, because it may require zoning changes, it may require other things that aren't consistent with your current land use plan, it may have a number of things that you need to consider. And it doesn't mean that they can't do it, and it doesn't mean that you're, they're strapped with it. It says, "Let's talk. Bring us involved."
Yeah, and I agree 100% with that. We also need to know what's coming in. It may not fit our plan, or it may not have fit our plan five years ago, or three years ago, but it'll fit our plan now with what's, what kind of expansion we're about to have and what our city infrastructure, now that we're expanding it, getting new and what our city infrastructure, now that we're expanding it, getting new infrastructure in. Maybe we can accept some new things that we wouldn't have looked at previously. So it's, it's good to know that, what, what we're chasing after. And also, it'd be really good to know for, for EDC what we want them to chase after. And, and that should be a moving target continuously, not, not just because our times are changing. And the different, I mean, who would have thought that Tesla was going to come here five years ago? And now, we, we need to adapt our vision on what we want to have come here because there's a lot of bits and pieces that's going to follow Tesla here. And, and maybe we wouldn't have wanted that stuff coming into the area previously. But it would be wise if we looked at it with, with open, open vision now and brought some of that here. If not, they're just going to go to Lockhart or Buta or Kyle or whatever new town they just got developed between ZenMarcus and Austin. So yeah, that, that's it.
Well, I was going to say that I think the second vision statement is, is interesting because when the business park was first being developed and everything, it was something that everyone was really excited about. And it kind of took away from a little bit of working with our historic downtown and working with the commercial corridor. Those were things that were growing fairly fa, quickly anyway. And the business park was a new thing that we were going to try to work with. But as, and we got a lot of development out there, but it kind of got put on hold because of some infrastructure deals and other interesting things that didn't happen. But you know, we've had so much growth in so many different avenues and so many different types of ways that it was hard, I guess, to really concentrate as much on the business park when you have a vibrant downtown that's growing and then 71 that's going really quickly as well. And the housing part of it's kind of now beginning to pick up. But yet and still, there's, you know, we're still behind on that because of the exponential growth that we're experiencing.
Yeah, to, to me, the business park is, is, should be, should be a priority. Because without those businesses in that park, regardless of what happens on 71 and retail, that, that's going to be there. It's, it's ever-changing because of the pandemic was, should be a good indicator of that as people aren't going to brick and mortar as much as they are. They're ordering it online, sending it to their house. And then the business park could be a hub of that delivery or economic boom for online orders or things like that.
Last mile type of stuff.
For warehouse type, type things versus, and then, and if you have those businesses established, then you're going to get the houses that's going to follow that and the people that come to work there. And, and then, then you get continued businesses downtown that'll, that'll just come here because we have a cool downtown. That's, that's why people come here. I just was lucky enough to get to tour some of the people at the 921 Main Street building for, for BEDC. And nobody knew, knew of that, of the people that I talked to that came to look at it, knew that we had a downtown like that. None of them did. They were like, wow, this is pretty neat. And I said, you should just walk one block over and you can see the river and you can eat down there. But nobody knows, knows that we have that. They think it's, we're just Highway 71. And then they really wouldn't know that we had a business park, you know, that could be filled with businesses, which would in turn fill our, our houses and our housing that we've got. So it just, one thing's going to lead to another, but we won't get any of it unless we have businesses here. And, and besides retail, because retail is so fluctuating, especially now, it just needs to be something that's more, not, not as substantial on people, on the economy as much as retail, retail is.
Well, when the business park was started, I'm not sure when that land was purchased that city council said, and let's have whatever percent of it, 20% of it be for the county that's not paying property taxes. Why'd we buy land and put a non-tax paying entity that didn't create additional jobs? You know, they're overcrowded in the courthouse, so we're going to build a building in the business park and never collect property tax. But we use property tax to purchase the property. Like there, and let me just say that I think the county's wonderful and we all want to be partners. But I don't think they would be, if they had economic development and were purchasing property to try to make money back, like we were talking about an ROI. What is the ROI on using tax dollars to buy property to then never collect property tax for, for forever? So for me, the directives for the, for the industrial park moving forward, that's really important. Because if you just say, get some buildings out there, well, that box gets checked. But if you say specific of, we want businesses that are maybe, we, we know we have medical supplies and there's, there's some businesses that are already here. If we have some ancillary businesses for that, they can kind of help support each other. And it's that balance between having some, some cohesion between those businesses, but also having some variety, because you don't want to be, have all your eggs in one basket. So if there's an issue that you, you know, now, now you're really hurting. But it is totally unfair to, to be a Monday morning quarterback and say, wow, I wouldn't have done that if you didn't lay out a game plan of expectations to begin with. And so that's why I think it's super important that we're clear about what those expectations are. And maybe, maybe we would have said, well, we're okay with 10% of the park going for government, whether it's county. Maybe it should have been, if the city needed, had some needs. But maybe there is a percentage cap on no more than this amount of the industrial parks going to go to a non-tax paying entity. And to Joe's point, if we come up with a, we think it should be less than 15%, well, if there's a reason, hey, we're moving so and so here because we're really going to do a development over there. But it doesn't mean you can't go outside of those boundaries. But it seems like we should have some logic around those boundaries and, and set those expectations. And on the ROI that you were visiting about, I think it would be extremely beneficial, as the person who also sits on the BEDC board, when we were, when we're voting on things, it would be great if we, if there was a standard, this is the ROI, this is how it's been calculated. We've checked off, I personally would like to see the city manager's signature that they've signed off, that there's power, that there's wastewater, that there's water, that the zoning is in place. And some of those feel like they would procedurally take care of some of the communication part, which I think people are wanting to communicate. But sometimes we get in a rush and a hurry to make an agenda deadline or something like that. And it would be beneficial, and wouldn't we as council like to see, this is the piece of paper that BEDC had when they voted on it, and that's why they approved it? It's based on this information?
That would be very helpful if, if they had that. And then we, we are a business, kind of, because we can't operate without either getting, charging people for taxes or increasing their taxes or bringing in business so we can create revenue from, from the business. So we have to have money to operate. We have to have more money to operate. Nobody's too keen on having their taxes raised from talking to everybody in town. So the only way we can do that is to generate more sales tax or more tax by business here. And then the, the business park is an excellent opportunity to do that. And I really wasn't aware that we had that much county buildings there, but now I think about it.
And I don't know what the exact percentage is, but I'm just thinking, the emergency center, the, the jail. And then there's a potential new project that's a number of acres as well. Because they're planning on having a justice center in the park.
And that's good that we can help, but that shouldn't be, it should be a very small percentage of the business park.
It's an opportunity cost.
Something that's going to generate income for the city somehow.
Well, timing and circumstance are going to drive a lot of those decisions. And the fact that at that point in time, there was some open land sitting out that was available. I'm sure that was part of the reason that the, that the city agreed to sell that to, to the county. And partnership is good. And again, I don't have an issue with, with working with the, the city and the county working together. But I think the, the lack of, lack of goals, both short term and long term, as Joe mentioned earlier, drives a lot of that. And the definition of what is success? Is it sheer number of, of development or opportunities? Or is it the, the public benefit? And I think from a city perspective, looking at the public benefit, the overall public benefit should be our driving factor in there. And perhaps by not having those clear goals and a clear process, is a BDC, BEDC assuming responsibilities that belong to the city? Is that because there has not been a clear goal? And then decided to just assume those responsibilities as, as, as part of the partnership? Or is, is there a good cause for that? And what is, what if, what have we as a city done to stall that thought process that they have to assume responsibilities that they should not assume? And I realize it's, it's a rhetorical question that I'm presenting. But I think these are things as we develop our policy and, and have these clear stated goals, that we need to be mindful that there's been some shortcomings that we have not addressed that is perhaps creating this behavior that, behavior, that sounds such, such a parental word, but, but creating these circumstances where people are assuming roles which they should not be.
Soon, my dad would say, sooner you fall behind, more time you have to catch up. So once you've fallen behind, then you decide how you want to catch up. So what you defined from here, whatever's happened in the past, you can define where you want to go. One thing I would tell you about government entities is, and I mentioned earlier, contributory employers. A, a government entity can be a contributory employer. But let me give you a couple of examples. If I have a, a national lab, a federal lab, I'm bringing in dollars from all over the place. I'm bringing in jobs. I'm bringing capital investment. I'm bringing hot tax. So sometimes they can be contributory employers. But that is not the norm. So typically, government entities, unless you can just determine that there's a benefit that their brain knew, you're not taking the pie and sharing it around within your community, you're increasing the size of that economic pie. And when you do that, that is how you can determine it's a, a contributory employer. Same thing with retail. Retail didn't used to be considered a, a contributory employer. Until now, you start to see that retail people are shopping from outside the area. And that's why retail, I used my example of Frisco earlier, why Walmart? It's a contributory employer. Why? Because that cash register for Adele's shopping is how we got revenue. So there's a lot of factors that, that that's why that flexibility becomes important. The other thing I would tell you is, think about this. The EDC should want this. Let's flip the coin for a second. And I keep bringing you stuff and you keep saying, no. Wait a second. Maybe if we had that guidance, we wouldn't be bringing stuff you didn't want. We'd focus on the things that you do want. So having alignment there ensures that they can focus their limited resources and time and, and qualify things of where it makes sense or it doesn't, or where if it's, if it might be iffy of how we can go through a process to bring it forward for consideration. So there's good reasons on both sides for these things to happen. And both sides should see the value in that because it makes more, makes both sides more efficient.
So, and, and I know we need to move on. I don't think you're asking us to pick which one of these visions.
No, no, no.
The idea is that both of these things are important.
Basically, there's a list of things that we go through that I'm suggesting are points that are going to be additive throughout this process that hit a variety of the elements we discussed. And the next part is still about vision. And it, it recognizes it is an acknowledgement to them that they are a critical component, an integral part of the city's economic development initiatives. Notice what's absent from that. They're not the only part of your economic development initiatives. The city has other things. And later on, you'll see where that, that plays out. But it is, it is recognizing that, that you view them with reverence. You view them as, as a critical component of your act. And you're relying upon them to get things done. And as you look at later, Councilman Nelson, on the defining the amount or, for that matter, on, on the idea of how much, that's something that you can task them to say, come back, let, let me give you an example. Business park, business parks are developed all over the place. And right now, industrial is hot and it's not making sense. Costs are up 30% to build shell space. Shell space for above 300,000 square feet is running about 55 bucks a square foot. You add another five bucks a square foot for soft costs, then land has outpaced that. Land in some places in, in Houston is running nine bucks a square foot. When you look at the cost of rents, have not kept up with the cost of, of construction. So how are they getting it funded? But you're looking at the marketplace and saying, is this a good return? If you don't know what your return and requirements are, if you don't know, and I'm going to go, let's say, I'm going to go invest in downtown and I'm going to go buy a building in downtown to rehab it. If I don't know that the marketplace can support it, or if I know the marketplace could support it, how do I negotiate my incentives unless I'm familiar with the different aspects of development? How do I develop a pro forma for my business park to how fast? I should know what absorption rates are for different square footage and a type of building. Is it 100 to 100, 100 to 200,000 square foot building? Or is it 300 to 500,000 square foot building that I'm looking at? What's the most likely in this area? What are the trends so that I can come back to you as council and say, listen, here's what we see as the cap rate in the community. We're seeing a 6% cap rate on investments, capitalization rate. There, there's three components they're going to look at. They're going to say, what's my net operating income? And they're going to take a look at my capitalization rate. And then I'm going to take a look at those items to determine what my value is. And if my, my income's not there, if my, if my value needs to be higher, then my, my capitalization rate needs to go down, inverse relationship. They're going to be coming back and saying, here's what we need to be able to get to. Here's what's going in the marketplace. And here's why we say this is a good return on investment for you. And a lot of times, communities will say, what is our cost of funds? How much does it cost for us to borrow funds or the EDC to borrow funds as a benchmark to say, I at least have to cover my, what I'm borrowing? So there's different things that you can look at, but all of them is a, remember my earliest point. Economic development does not make a bad deal a good deal. It makes a good deal possible. So there's a sound business premise by what you undertake it. And understanding that business premise is critical.
So Mayor, if it's okay, I want to take what Joe just did and connect the dot back to the question that Mayor Pro Tim Nelson asked earlier. And you called it a rhetorical question? And if I remember it correctly, you were, you were wondering if the BEDC was doing stuff the city ought to be doing. And, and I think what we're resolving here and what Joe just very well described is that no one's doing it. There's, there's a void. There's a, there's a logic and there's a process and there's a, a decision-making model that ought to be present. It's not present. And it's not present because the city council's never asked for it.
I, I agree with that just from what, what I've seen. And is it, is it, I don't think it's wrong to have the EDC doing some of those things. Because somebody's got to do them. But if they do them or doing them in a direction of council or councils involved with the whole process and we don't learn about it after the fact, then that's even a better thing. Because now, now we've got the communication to approve it. We got the communication to see what the, what they need help on or what the city needs help on. And I, I just think our, our business park should be, when you drive home to Houston, should be similar to all that infrastructure now that's going out. Katy Freeway on the way here with all those commercial buildings. And, and they're building them big enough for four tenants. But one tenant could move into the entire building. Four people could take four corners. You could take a little piece of it. But that's what we could fill our business park with if we want to invest in it and do that rather than just waiting for somebody to come here too, if that's, if that's one of our options to do that.
Part of my, my comments are on focus and accountability. When you look at, at it for, for, you, you both are the same team. You both want the same outcome. The city does certain things well. That's what they do. They build stuff. They operate stuff. The EDC's role is to go, the difference was explained to me between convention visitor services and, and EDCs are, EDCs want people to come and stay, CVBs want people to come and go. But that doesn't mean that they're necessarily, they want things to get built. And you're a team. And so if you coordinate better and you're communicating better than the idea of the city taking care of the projects it normally takes care of, whether it contracts that services or not, they're managing it because they're part of the team to get things done. And accountability ultimately for those projects rests with this body. The next item, moving to the second of the five, is people. That the next, the policy direction is that the council would indicate the EDC, BDTC board is appointed to establish an annual plan of work that supports the city and its vision for economic development. One you're going to see is one of those elements specifically is more of a strategic plan. But that, as a part of that, there's an annual plan of work that supports that. But the idea is, again, that they're bringing back things for your consideration. There's a consistency. It's not about reporting. It's about a consistency of execution, action and who, and roles and responsibility. So the EDC's board is responsible. So, the E D C's board is responsible for bringing you a plan of work that's consistent with your goals and objectives, that ties into your mobility, that ties into your, to authentic Bastrop, that ties into the different elements that you have for your vision for the city. On top of that, I mentioned earlier that you're not saying the board should do all this. So, the E D C board, the B E D C board should set expectation of the staff is proactively coordinating and cooperates with the city manager and his or her staff. Why? Because ultimately, things get done amongst, across both of you. So, there needs to be a sharing of information and a proactive cooperative sharing of information. It's not, I'm sorry, I can't give you that. It's a double secret probation. That doesn't work. Find a way to make it work. Don't find me excuse, find me a solution because I need this information to proactively do what I need to do. So, we are in this together, let's find a way to work together. Again, the city will provide the contract support services. On performance, I alluded to this earlier. There are two things in a larger element that you're tasking the E D C board with, the B E D C board with. One, you're tasking them with leading efforts. These are the activities that their staff engages upon their behalf, a part of that business plan, to do business recruitment, to do business retention expansion, to build the business park, to undertake workforce or film entertainment. Those typical economic development activities, the day-to-day, creating recommendations on incentives, those are the type of activities that they're going to undertake on a day-to-day basis. There's also things that you're going to look for them to fund, that you're going to undertake, your Main Street program, infrastructure and some quality of life initiatives. Those infrastructure and quality of life initiatives would be developed as a part of your goals for economic development would support that. It could be that you've identified there's a hole in your, for your community sustainability, your economic development goals. Is to have connectivity for the work centers to the housing, things that you could determine are quality of life initiatives. In Sugarland, it was girls softball. Why? Because it brought in dollars from people visiting the city to play ball and bringing their kids and stayed in hotels and spent money. It was an activity. In other communities, it is, you get up toward Frisco again, their goal is art. They require you, if you have an incentive project, to invest in public art. There's a wide variety of things that are quality of life initiatives that you're looking to get into.
And Joe, I believe that was, that's essentially specific of tying back to using the full breadth and depth as allowed by state statute.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's something that, I feel like this is, those of you that were on council in 2017, you know how painful it was to come up with our nine focus areas the first time? And then every, when you're looking at them annually, it's a lot easier to look at them. So, I feel like this first time around, it may be kind of painful to come up with some of these guidelines, but with the regular meetings and once we get into a rhythm, then they may have some modifications. And we also know that our friends to the west meet every two years, and sometimes they change rules or change things, and we need an opportunity to make sure that we're all keeping up on the same page. But for me, this feels very much like that first time that we did the nine focus areas. It may, it's taking us a while to do it the first time, but if it gets dedicated regularly, looked at, then there's understanding across the board and we can make those minor corrections to make sure that we're still all paddling in the same direction.
Thank you, Mayor. And members.
I'm glad we made it start making those changes because it was very, very hard to deal with, at least for me, because during those days, there's a lot of cutting paste that didn't apply to Bastrop at all. So, I'm glad we got that turned around to where we can do the right thing for all the citizens of Bastrop and, you know, and that's, I'm glad we hit in the right direction.
So.
Well, continuation of that point, very wise, city attorney won't say that we have the right to learn. We also have the obligation to learn. That's to you, Mr. Borquez. I appreciate that. And so, it's always a learning process. Nature towards a vacuum, and that's what we're attempting to do is fill in this vacuum that has created a problem with communication, consistency, and all those other factors that are in place. So, thank you.
We could spend a lot of time, it's not, this has to, doesn't have to be done in a day. This is a process where you can take a series of steps and also a learning process with your board as well. My goal is to provide you with information to start that discussion. So, I'll back up for a second and say, is this of value? Are you getting value out of this discussion? Are we getting the points that you think are important? Are there things that I have not covered that are of concern to you? I may get to them later, but I want to make sure that we're, are meeting your needs.
I'm glad that you, that we're looking at it and that we've brought it up so that we can continue the vision and the nine focus areas because if you look at number one over there, it's communication. And if that was from 2017, then that's another D that we got. It's great that we've got the areas, but we need to continue to remind ourselves, and then from me being the newest council member, I guess, and it's not that new now, but the onboarding process of that, and Joe and I kind of visited with that, is that I didn't take the initiative at first to onboard myself to everything that's going on with city council. I mean, I knew a lot of the stuff, but it was definitely a crash course for me and a lessons learned on a lot of things that I've had to adjust to. And also, just learning how the city operates. And a lot of it, you don't know and you can't learn until you get into the position. So, the onboarding piece of it, I think we can help out, especially with three new members coming on this year. I think it's three. And we really need to focus on that for three new people coming on, that we give them the tools to onboard and get up to speed with everything quickly.
And I would like to add to that from an expectation standpoint, we need to onboard B E D C directors as well.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, because that, you know, it's like, congratulations, you've been appointed, council unanimously confirmed, just see you Monday, you know? And we can do a better job on that, not only with B E D C, but with all of our boards, but specifically with B E D C and their ability and their obligation to spend tax dollars and make recommendations, onboarding them is to everybody's advantage. So, that needs to be an expectation that's added to the performance expectations, in my opinion.
Well, and our high turnover of city managers and B E D C CEOs or presidents or whatever they, we're calling them, that turnover has been pretty high in the past, since I've just been here 10 years. And I think we've probably had 10, five of each in that number, and then so.
Think you might be exaggerating, but your point is made.
But with that turnover margin, then it's hard, it's hard for a staff or for a city really to get a clear direction if you're going to change it every three years. And that, just having good people in those positions now, if we can keep those good people like Paul, then we can go on a straight path a lot easier than we can if we're changing the direction every three years. And that's no far, no fault. So, I did say that, yeah. That's no fault of anybody here, it's just something that happened. But we need to observe that it happened and then be able to correct that because now we got that to learn, that we've learned, you know, from that experience too.
Right. And you make a valid point. I was just about to comment on that. I mean, you know, we're in an era of change and there's quite a bit of change that goes from time to time, and we are about to have a turn, not really a turnover, but we're about to have a major change in the makeup of the council. Half of us will be gone by May. And so, therefore, it's good that we're making the plans and things, but we don't know who, what the future will hold with those people, and they may or may not agree with some of the, you know, decisions that are being made now. But that doesn't mean that we don't need to plan. I'm hoping that we will plan and try to onboard those people to get them involved with the process and everything. I know that when I came back to the council, I mean, there were a lot of changes that had occurred and still have occurred, and I was playing catch-up again, although I had been on the council previously several times. There were a lot of changes that I had to get adjusted to. And, you know, it seems like that's about to happen again with the three new people coming in. But I think it's good that we do have some change. It's also good that we're planning and we're trying to get together with the E D C to make some of these changes happen and to get, you know, the input from the public as well. I think that a lot of our citizens would like to be more involved, and we do have a lot that are involved with our boards and commissions, of course, due to the excellent choices that you've made, Mayor, some of your appointments. But there's still a segment or several segments of our community that still haven't quite gotten on board with what we're trying to accomplish. And I think, and it's hard for us to get all of those people together, but eventually, I hope that that will happen.
Step back for a second. When I first came before this council, my opening remarks was a quote from Theodore Roosevelt. And in that, one of the elements is, it says, there is no effort without error and shortcoming. Whether it is the E D C's views or whether it's the things that you've described that have not been followed, whether it's communication or whatever, there's no effort without error and shortcoming. What everyone is doing, and what I hope the E D C board will take these comments, and what I hope that you will also take these comments, is that it's okay to make mistakes. It's not okay to repeat mistakes and not learn from them. And so, this is all positive elements, conversations, and whatever has occurred in the past that has not met the expectations, that doesn't mean that we can't meet them now. And so, I think this is all positive work for everyone going forward, and I hope that the board will see it as you do. So, I've indicated, I'm moving to the next point then, systems and processes. You're tasking the B E D C board through their staff or however to come back with standardized applications, processes, procedures, measures to identify, review, underwriting how they're going to do incentive projects. This is different than the projects the city might be bringing to them that you're going to, the Main Street. This is not managing the projects that you're bringing to. This is the economic development efforts with which they're charged. Bringing incentives for a redevelopment project, bringing incentives for a business retention expansion, for a new business attraction, those are the types of things. If I'm going to bring a workforce program to you, let's say that's not my strategic plan, well, let's determine as a part of that, how pervasive, how large is that need for workforce? And if it's only three or four mechanics, well, do we want a program for that? Match the tool with the goal. Match the effort with the problem. So, let's make sure we define the problem first, identify it, quantify it, determine its scope and ability and bring it back to you. So, that's the things that you're going to ask them to help you do as a part of this effort. To ensure that they're budget forecasting, to ensure because they're bringing things that they want to accomplish, it's coordinated with yours. You have a budget calendar that you go through. You shouldn't see things, and I'm not suggesting that you do, but let's reinforce some of the things that may already exist to make sure that as they're planning for their budget, that you see it along with yours so that everything is coordinated. So, if there are things that you're bringing to them, that things are brought together in a timely fashion.
Joe, I have to be Captain Obvious and say that these, with these processes in place, that takes care of, Councilmember, your comment on when you do have staff turnover, then you have, things are documented and they're consistent, and we know what form needs to be filled out. And then it doesn't matter who signed it, it's that you know.
Right.
There were our two organizations, the directors at the time that project was discussed are aware of it and have signed off on it. And I think that those processes help with onboarding and help with any staff turnover, which we hope goes away, but when it does happen, we're not in the, but that's not what I remembered she said to him two months ago, which is kind of what we've got right now.
Yeah. And then you turn it into a plug-and-play thing, you can almost just plug another person into that spot and they can proceed on with what rules are.
They can at least jump in the canoe and see which way everybody else is paddling, you know? Which makes it helpful instead of wondering what kind of water vehicle they're in.
You can, I'm sorry. That is absolutely true. The points you made and the points that the mayor made, they're true as long as the people that come new into those leading administrative roles are good hires, take a professional approach to their job and understand their role relative to the policymakers. And take a humble public servant kind of approach to the role and leave the outcome directives to the city council. That unfortunately, isn't always the case in my profession, but yeah, I mean, we, the professional organization that I belong to, and there's professional organization out there for economic development directors too, you find someone who is committed to understanding that kind of role, and yeah, the organization is fine. Absolutely. They probably learn some new ideas.
Paul, I totally agree with that. We need someone that'll come in and be a team player and not come in with their own agenda. Because I've been with some council, council in the past that have come in with their own agenda and it just did not work.
Ditto. I understand that too. What I was going to say is, you know, you were talking about workforce and workforce development and everything, and that's something that, in the past, we've worked with, we have a workforce development corporation right here. I mean, we have that business, that organization that's state-funded that does a lot of workforce things, and I don't feel like we really worked with them enough to get some of the, use some of the tools that they have to, for training and all of that. I mean, I worked with them years and years ago, and, but we haven't, I don't think we've touched, we've scratched the surface with working with them, and not just us as a city, but I don't know if the school or the county is even working with them to get things going. But if they are, they've been very quiet about it, so.
And I think that's the key because there's some B E D C staff that's screaming at the screen right now because they do work with the Rural Workforce Commission on a very regular basis. But to your point, as a sitting council member, you're not aware of that. So, that's back to a communication problem.
Right. Well, I work with them constantly as well because I know most of the staff and I've worked with them and meet there regularly, and I kind of disagree, but okay.
Oh, I thought you were saying you thought we weren't doing it, and what I'm saying is that B E D C staff is working with them right now, but they, their efforts haven't been communicated to you as a council member. Because I thought you were saying you didn't think E D C and the city were working with them. I may have misunderstood you.
No, I was, that's what I said.
So, the importance of planning, standardization, in addition to the things the mayor mentioned, is it deals with the project du jour. Because if you have changes in council, if you have changes in board members, you don't deal with, I have the latest and greatest, I just got on board and here's what we need to do. And so, it's a YOY effect. And it's not that people don't have good ideas, but because if you do that and you don't have a plan, it's not that you don't evaluate what's brought up, but you have a context to say, these are the things that we're going to do, these are the things that are important. Here's the plan of work. If we're going to amend that plan of work, there's a process we're going to go through. Think of it like an ordinance. If I have an ordinance, we don't just change those on a day-to-day basis. If I'm going to amend it, I'm going to do a thoughtful process because I already decided my budget, here's the way I'm going to go spend my budget. So, there's a process by which you put these things in place. Now, to the people, you made me think of this, there's a, as I've told people, I've been on the bus, off the bus, somebody's moved my cheese, I've speeded toward trust, I've had the seven habits of highly effective people, all those different things. Well, there's another one called entrepreneurial or operational systems, and it is an organization that exists to help companies start and grow quickly. One of the things that they do with the people, and you talked about bringing them on board, is they deal with what's called the right people, right seat. And the idea is, the cultural values, the expectations of an organization need to be obtained by the people that you bring on board. They hire, they fire for it, they do all those types of things to make sure that there's a consistency of viewpoints of the people that you bring on board. Right person, right seat, right person, wrong seat. Could be that it's the right person, but they don't have the skills in this, they could excel elsewhere. It's a means by which personnel are brought on board. And so, my point with that being is that it is absolutely important to ensure that you have people that share your values, share the expectations, because that is a key to a consistent application of your tasks and accomplishment of your goals. Execution and accountability. So, I mentioned earlier that I would get more granular. Here's where it is. So, you're asking, you're tasking in this thought, if it would include it in your policy, that the board will create for review, approval of the city council, a multi-year strategic plan that they complete, and it's typically a five to seven year plan that they complete, and it's typically a five to seven year plan, but then it's updated typically annually as the factors go by. That that creates an annual business plan, that creates staffing resource plans, that creates budgets that then come so that you have a plan of work, that you have a consistency that also allows the city, as you bring this forward, to dovetail your efforts, your staffing plans, your needs to have a successful economic development effort. We've mentioned the project underwriting worksheet, I've mentioned the pro forma of the business park. Those are things that would be specific requests of the, of the BEDC to accomplish, to bring back to you. It does not say, as the council members have pointed out in a couple of comments, what that specific measure is for return on investment. I cannot tell you today what that should be for you, nor is my role, but I'm suggesting to you that it is an important goal for you to help decide, and it's a process that you would go through to determine it. And I think that you will set one. We set one in, for our 4A Corporation for Direct Incentives in Sugar Land of 10 and 1/2 percent rate of return. I had to have an IRR of 10 and 1/2 percent, and it assumed that you're selling an asset in the eighth year and there's certain things that we did to get there, but I had a process in place that I could bring to council and say, "Yea, verily, here's the return on investment, does it meet it or does it not? And here's where it deviates, or here's why we justify that." Now, I'm not going to tell you that that example I used is what you should adopt. I'm going to tell you that that concept of determining what value is to you, what that return on investment is to you, the different factors of benefit that you're going to measure are part of this process. And that can be part of an attachment or part of a task that you can assign, say, "Board, your task was coming back and giving us these recommendations. We want you to be successful. We're not telling you exactly, you're not a rubber stamp. You're here to go do meaningful things for us and help bring us back recommendations. And here's where we need to be able to make good decisions, and we're tasking you because then you'll know what you've looked into to bring these things back to us." So that's part of the execution and accountability part that I have heard people talk about and what I've gleaned from some of the efforts, and quite frankly, what I think also works, that I would offer for your consideration as a part of the policy measure. I see a couple heads, yes, does that make sense? Do you disagree with it? Other areas, things that you would change on me?
I think it's a very good idea, and we should have been doing that before now. Every one of those items, that we have all the reporting in a five to seven year, and it needs to be updated annually because our businesses coming here are going to change annually, I think. So I think that all of that is, it's not on the plan now, that it needs to be on the plan.
All right. Next point. Again, the systems. Let's have them create and implement the appropriate systems and protocols to coordinate with the city. It's on you, you have responsibilities, we have responsibilities as a city, they have responsibilities as a board, as an entity, to coordinate necessary information so that the return of that is the city has, let me flip that coin again, the city has the responsibility to share information, as you're looking to do now, so that they can be successful. So that road travels both ways. You're sharing information, you're helping them so their projects, they need to know that affect economic development. I'm not suggesting that you're not, but that, I want to make sure it's understood. Communication is a two-way street. All right? So when you look at it, our next steps is to come back to you in January. Before we do that, we'll go to the EDC board, actually, they're, because of the timing of holidays, their meeting in January is going to be right before your council meeting, the 24th, I think it is? There's the 24th?
We'll be back before council on January 25th, and the schedule would be for you to be on the BEDC agenda on the day before January 24th. Haven't communicated that yet with the BEDC folks, but that's the schedule.
As I mentioned, there's a lot more detail. There's going to be a written element that will have additional supplemental information that goes, but these are the main points, and quite frankly, the policy directive, as it is anticipated now, based on the conversation today and what's been put forward, would be developed along the lines as a resolution, I think, for you to consider. With that, I have concluded my remarks outside. Any questions or comments or things or additions, Mr. City Manager, if I've missed anything or things that you would add? Mayor, you as well.
I really appreciate, and I also appreciate the fact that you couch us in such a way that it allows for disagreement amongst any group together, but it has to create that dialogue in there, as long as everybody has the same goal in mind, that it's probably going to produce a better result because the more input you get from more people, the better your product would be. And as long as you have, I was thinking earlier in our conversation, the military has a technical manual for everything, you know, how to paint rocks. I mean, it's very clear in there, but it creates a consistency in not only the messaging, but also in the productivity. So I think we're well on our way of doing just that.
I was just going to say, I was looking at this execution and accountability listing and the things for review and approval by the council from the EDC, and I was looking at that and just going back over the years, I guess, I thought a lot of those things had been accomplished in the past, but I guess with a lot of the changes that have come forward, they weren't consistently carried over or whatever, or somehow got lost in the shuffle. But I know that there were usually annual reports, there were business plans, you know, developing a prototype for the industrial park and all those types of things, but I guess they just haven't consistently, you know, moved forward from that situation. But I don't know if you talked to the staff that's been there now, that have been there previously, and to kind of find out some of the things that they had done previously with previous directors and previous, because, you know, they've had a long history of developing things, and there were a bunch of things, well, most of what you put there, I think, was handled in the past, but I don't think it's been carried through lately at all.
Here's, it may have been, but what I would tell you is absent is where the rubber meets the road. What is success? Right now is more of American Bandstand. Well, this project's good project, we have $14 million in capital investment, well, wait a second, what's the return on investment? I'm suggesting to you that it's not, you can have lousy plans, you can have good plans, you can have mediocre plans, you can have a variety of them. What I'm suggesting to you is there's some additional details than guidance that is what success is. Again, what's the, what is your plan for absorption of the business park? What are the metrics associated with whether or not, there is, there's not a pro forma, as I understand it, from any of the interviews that I've been able to, I've had or information I've received, is to say, here's how we determine which, how much this project gets, there's a consistency over time. So I'm looking at the elements of the business plan which exists. There is a strategic plan now. When you ask people what success is, nobody said, "That's how we're measuring success." So I'm trying to make sure that there's a consistency of view, that there's a consistency of implementation, that there's additional detail in it as a part of these recommendations so that it's useful, it's beneficial. Right now, you have plans in place, you don't have processes for good communications. You have holes in these elements. So let's fill out this so that, for the success, for the success of all. That's where I'm heading with that.
And I think, Doc, that we probably, all those things do happen, we get the reports, but the communications part is still the key element that's missing because even though we were handed a report or people were handed a report, we need to communicate what's in the report, it needs to be done in detail, and if we don't understand it, we need to ask questions about it. And the communication piece of it, because I may be wrong, Connie, you can correct me on this, there was an 18-month time period when we didn't have a meeting with the EDC, right?
I thought you meant BEDC didn't meet for 18 months, no, no. You meant between, prior to 2017, I don't, Mr. Peterson, were there joint meetings with BEDC?
Yeah, so that's where, we may have got a report and a packet, but we need to, we need to have that verbal conversation with the BEDC and have that communication, and that's where I think it's failed, is the communication piece of it.
Well, and I think that when they turn in their budget and we adopt a budget that includes them, I think there are some folks that say, "Okay, that is our annual business plan and that is our annual report." But I think what we're talking about on this is something completely different. When the industrial park was purchased, I don't, I've been on the BEDC board for five years, I was never told this was the year we thought it would be completely absorbed. And when the park was purchased, I don't think people thought there'd still be hundreds of acres available in 2021. I don't think that was the intention when the property was purchased. It had a, you know, and in fact, the phase one discussions and trying to build the infrastructure ahead of the JAMCO was because they thought it was all going to be done in a five to 10 year, don't you think, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I absolutely agree. And during those days, I think everybody kind of thought industrial park was part of Unit Six. Another nightmare. And I hate to put it like that, but I'm going to put it like that. But we're heading in the right direction to make a lot more progress with the EDC, and the bottom line is communication, communication, communications. So if we can get that done, I think we can move forward and we can all work together.
Mayor, Pro Tim Nelson, you've mentioned disagreement. The one caveat or thing that I would highlight is, is that so long as there's not an absence of the understanding of who ultimately makes a decision. And disagreement's fine, but ultimately, if a decision has to be made and we disagree, then if council makers have a decision that's in, that is in opposite to where the board wants to go, then the board is expected to follow the council's decision. It's not, "We're going to say this is a bad idea, we don't want to do it." You hop to, salute the flag and move on down the road because this is the direction that has been selected. That's what you're elected to do, is make those determinations, and that's the process that you follow. And you're ultimately asking them to accomplish a program of work that you've decided you would like them to do. So that's, disagreement's great, but that's the one caveat I would add to that.
I really appreciate that, and I guess I should have been more clear. I think it creates a perspective that perhaps the decision maker may not have had, that allows them to make a better decision at the end.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, and I also don't want, and we can address this, when you guys are preparing the resolution, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Borquoz may be involved in that as well, but this is a lot, and I don't want, I don't think we should be in a position as council to say, "This hasn't existed for the past 25 years and we'll see you in January, you better get this done." So it would be helpful in the resolution to outline, you know, what we think is most important, and in fact, I would like to suggest that Mr. Esch and I assume Mr. Hoffman will be at the BEDC board to say like, "Look, here's where the resolution's going." And then, council, if you choose to approve the resolution, I would hope that we would, as soon as schedules allow, and perhaps maybe we even start looking for a date, have a joint meeting with the EDC board and together, say, of the seven things we're asking you to do, what do you think you can get done this next year? And a part of their annual report back would be, "You gave us seven things to do, we committed to getting three of them done, and guess what, we got four of them done." But I don't want us to just throw a resolution over the wall and then say, you know, "See you in a year." So I think it would be really beneficial to meet, and when we have an approved, this is council's approved objectives, meet with them on how to get those implemented and set some priorities. I think that might be beneficial. Drew, I know you have your light on.
See, and I'm not sure if this is possible, it'll be Alan telling me, "No, you can't have it." But in that resolution, maybe like the timeline, we want, you know, this is our main goal, we want to get here, but we're not going to be able to, we know you can't do all that by January, but out of these 20 items, we want to see the, these top three done within, you know, now, and then these, and then hopefully within a certain amount of time. So I don't know if you can do a
You can.
...resolution in a timeframe, but of course, you're not going to be able to expect, I don't want to be expected to do everything right now, but, you know, we can narrow it down to what is needed. On the ROI, I really want to know every project you bring me, I want to know how long it's going to take me to get the city's money back, at least break even. You know, there's some things that I'd like to know, you know, right away on anything coming to us, so I was just hoping, you know, like to give them the timelines.
There's not a lot, this is not rocket science. There's a lot of processes that are already out there. As a good friend of mine, a city manager, you should say that steals shamelessly from others, learn from others. There are other processes that you can duplicate that don't take a lot of time. Some of the keys in this element are making sure that you're following good communication, information's being shared. Some of the other elements to developing it will follow because as you're working together, it requires you both to work together to be able to accomplish some of these things. So some of the relationship issues are paramount, in my view, because they lead toward the ability to accomplish the other objectives.
I wanted to backtrack on a couple of things that I said, because I don't think they came out right.
That's what workshops are all about, Councilmember Kraut, you get a second shot.
I know. And one is that I'm all for giving the county land over in the industrial park for what we've already given them. I wasn't, I didn't say that to be negative on any previous people that did that because, and that was just more of my point of, it's changing, the use of that is changing, and great, we gave that away and we can give some more away, but we need to, the city needs to grow and be economically stable, and that's just going to help by having the business park.
I don't think it was given, but I don't think they paid top dollar.
Yeah, and then the other thing is, is I think BEDC is doing an excellent job with all the prospects that they're chasing. I think the issue is that we don't know what they're chasing, and they don't know if they're chasing what we want them to chase. I think that they're doing an excellent job, but our communication to them and their communication back to us can improve 100%. I didn't, anything I said, I didn't mean that they weren't doing their job, or we just need to be on the same path forward so that we're all chasing the same thing and bring good people here. And that was it.
Well, with a lack of direction, you chase everything, and if you chase everything, it takes more work, so it's helpful if we can narrow, and if we already know this isn't a good match, let them go to another town where it might be a good match, and not get a reputation of, "They strung us along and then we got to council, it didn't match with the alignment, and so council didn't approve it." Now everyone's irritated.
And then we waste city staff to planning and development, right? Because they're looking at things that they're bringing in and when we may not even want it here. So it would be easier and better on everybody and most efficient if we were all chasing the same thing.
I guess what I was trying to say earlier too is with all the exponential growth, that I mean, it was a little overwhelming, I guess, for EDC and for the city because we're being pulled in so many directions. I said, like I was mentioning with the retail growth and the, I guess the business park kind of got left behind the curve on that because developing the downtown and the 71 corridor, and then thinking about the housing and all those things that you mentioned were time-consuming. And, you know, we've experienced, as I said, I keep saying exponential growth, but I mean, tremendous growth. And it's been hard to keep up with, especially with, you know, the size of our staff and our town and everything, but I think we're doing the best we can at this point, but we're going to probably have to step up a little bit as this growth continues because it's not going to get any less at all, for sure.
Well, Councilman Kraut, when it happens at my house, I tell my wife, "You misunderstood what I meant to say." So with that, I will say thank you so much and appreciate your time. We'll look forward to coming back with you. I appreciate, Merry Christmas to all of you, hope you have a fabulous holiday, and wishing you all the best.
I have one final thing. Mr. Attorney, you have, we have the blessed pleasure of having a city attorney that represents all kinds of cities, bigger than us, smaller than us, all across the state. I would really like to tap into that experience and ask if there's something that you think we should have talked about, something that should be included. Lessons learned by somebody else are always really good lessons, so I'm interested if you think there's anything maybe we should add.
Mayor, Council, Joe, I don't know that I have a lot to add. I think where this kind of relationship comes along, where you may not have both parties operating along the same lines in terms of goals, expectations, procedures, it does come from a lack of communication, which, you know, it helps if it happens often, if it happens in writing. I think the joint meetings you've been holding with BEDC are commendable to try to get everyone on the same page. I've seen, I've seen some pretty terrible situations between city councils and EDC boards, which I'm not observing in this scenario, but this sort of thing does happen because of what was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, which is boards, groups sometimes take on identities of their own, either to fill a vacuum boards, groups sometimes take on identities of their own, either to fill a vacuum, or just because it happens over time. And so, the cultural alignment, the procedural alignment, the values, that is all crucial, and I'm highly encouraged by the path we have forward today.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, I think you had your light on.
Yes, I just had a comment from Mr. Esch. I really like how you used Frisco as an example, for us, with the Walmart and so forth, but in Frisco, they've got Bentleys, Ferraris, Maseratis, and million-dollar homes. So you used them as examples, great.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
All right, council, with that, I'm happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right. Have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson, and two seconds, one from Mr. Crouch and one from Ms. Rogers. Everyone have a safe day, and council, I'll see you tomorrow at 5:30. I would encourage you to get a good night's sleep and eat a big dinner, because it's going to be a long meeting tomorrow. Everybody be safe tonight. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
At 4:52.